Good afternoon. I would like to call the Solina City Commission meeting of July 23 to order. Would the clerk please call to roll?
Mayor Jenny?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Would those that are able, please join me in the Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence. Each week during our meeting, we provide the opportunity for the citizens of Solina to come and address the commission with any concerns, comments that you have. It would pertain to items not on today's agenda as there's an opportunity to comment during those items. So if there's a citizen here amongst us today that would like to address the commission, please come forward, state your name and your address and whatever your concern or question is. Okay, seeing none, today we have no awards and proclamations, so we'll move to public hearings, item scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution Number 126923, providing for repair or removal of six dangerous structures.
Mr. DeVors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We came to you a while back and with these six different structures, one of our charges is to not only make sure that the codes, building codes are met, but also that current housing stock, current buildings in the city do not pose a risk to the general public. We do this through responding to customer service requests as well as self-initiated inspections by our inspectors who are driving out in the community. We use the 1997 Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Structures to do this. I know this sounds like a antiquated code, but this is the only code that is, the ICC has not updated that code, so that is the code that we use just in case someone has a question for that. And Exhibit A in your packet has the Dangerous Structures Inspection Checklist from that book. We determine that a structure is dangerous, we notify the owner of record and any other identified parties, and we do that with a violation notice, which is Exhibit B in your packet. The notification is sent certified mail, of course, and to the property owner of record who, that we did a title search on to determine that. I might mention that we did start off with 10, well, 12 structures, two of them we have kind of put on hold. Three of them have been demolished by the owners, and one is under, currently under repair by an individual who purchased the property. Kansas statutes allows us to provide, go through procedures, those are listed in your packet, one through, bless you, one through eight. We've scheduled a public hearing, which we are here today to do. We published it for two consecutive weeks in the Journal, June 15th, June 22nd. A copy of the resolution was mailed to, by certified mail, to the property owner, and that was done on June 15th, notification of this meeting. We did have, some of those were returned to us. And as I mentioned, Exhibit A is the Dangerous Structures list. We included one for each one of the properties. Got a ghost in the machine here. Anyway, and then the other item is the, is that me, or is that the?
Yeah, there's just something technically wrong. You keep going and it'll get itself worked out.
Okay. Anyway, then we had the buildings officials request for condemnation, which is, I'm not moving, I promise. Okay. Anyway, the building officials request for condemnation for each one of the properties, starting with 503 North 13th Street. I have John Berger from our office to show us the, some of the photographs. This particular property, all of these properties are vacant currently. This particular property was damaged by a fire on February 3rd of this year, approximately, destroyed approximately 75% of the roof. There's also some foundation problems with this house. Basically, the owners bought this house on contract and have basically walked away from it, as far as we can tell. And the concern, of course, would be roof collapse with any additional loads being imposed on it. We also have a, in March of this year, we did a cleanup of the debris and boarded up the house. It doesn't look as bad as it does now, of course, because we have it boarded up and everything, but the roof is still in that precarious position, so. Then, that's a picture of the roof there, where it, the fire, fire pretty much heavily damaged the inside and about, like I said, about 75% of the roof. The next property is 633 South 4th Street. This one, the taxes are current on this one, but this house is not occupied. It's currently used for storage, it's packed full of storage, and there's also a storage shed in the back that is in bad situation also, that, a lot of the foundation, you can see here where the foundation's actually undermined. It's not sitting on the foundation properly in a lot of places, a lot of places, the soffit and fascia is, if you go to the next picture, John, I think, or, well, one more, one more. Actually, up the, well, these are mostly foundation pictures, but there is a picture in here that shows the soffit and fascia is pretty much rotted away.
Two more.
Two more, yeah. Number eight.
Yep, that's it.
There it is. So, so this, this property, once again, like I said, the taxes are current, but we had no, no response on this house either.
And on this house, because of, because it's constructed and understood as an inhabitable dwelling, just because the owner is using it to store things in, it's not, doesn't fall in what the city would look at for a storage building or a building that's listed as that type of use.
You're correct, yes, Mr. Mayor. If, you can't have a storage building by itself on a house, on a lot, even if you wanted to. It's not zoned for that. You can have a garage, detached garage, or a storage building with your house, but the primary use cannot be just strictly storage. But there's, there's some foundation problems, and animals are able to get into the attic and underneath the house, and there's, there's some other structural concerns with this one as well. And like I said, we have, we've had no contact from the owner for that one. We, we got the notice back unclaimed, and it's, it's kind of a, well, I won't speculate, but anyway, on to the next one. 636 North 5th Street. This one, taxes are, were due, half of the taxes were due as of May 10th. There's no, been no active water customer count since 2004. The south side, from the front, it doesn't look too bad, but there's a big hole in the roof right there that you can see underneath the chimney, or below the chimney there that could be a potentially, potential big problem there. South side of the house appears to have settled almost six inches, and the rear also shows significant settlement and partial collapse. If you saw that previous picture, if you go back to that last picture real quick, John, you can see the window isn't even level with the, with, there's something structurally going on with the roof there. So, we, of course, are not allowed, are not able to get inside the houses and do any kind of structural analysis or anything on these.
Elvin, I, I don't think this microphone's working, but I'll talk loud.
Oh, yeah.
I think I know the lady that lived there. I just wondered if you had been able to get in touch with her, because she, I think, if it's who I think it is, she'd moved away for quite a few months and is just recently back. And I haven't seen her, but I've heard that she was back, and I just wondered if she has received notice and, you know, let you know anything.
We have, not only, we post the properties with a, with a notice, we've sent them out.
She wouldn't see that. I mean, I don't think she's an elderly lady, and I don't, if it's who I'm thinking of, it's...
From what my report says, the owner of this is deceased, so.
Well, maybe it's a different one then. It might be somebody.
I can, we can do some more research on that and find out for sure, but...
I want to be sure it's not the lady that I'm thinking of.
Commissioner, just for clarification on one statement that was made about not being able to go inside, we, we have always administered this under the legal guidance that you don't go inside without permission. Now, if we feel the need to go inside, for example, we believe there's a structural deficiency inside that cannot be validated from outside, we still have the ability to go upstairs to District Court and get an administrative search warrant to do that, but I think in these cases, Elvin would agree that there's so much from the outside, there just hasn't been a need to go through that process.
Yeah.
Looks like it.
If, Ms. Crawford, if you have any information on that?
I'll see if I can find out something.
We definitely, we've exhausted our research on, you know, done, and all of these have, these, there's three particular properties that the owners are deceased, and they have no next of kin, or they didn't go through probate properly, or, you know, there's different, different. And that's why we notified and we post the properties and posted in the newspaper and try to get the word to these folks. But yeah, I'd be more than happy to try to do a little research on this. Most of these, most of these structures, just from a, from the outside, it appears as if it would probably cost more to rebuild them and fix them up than, than they're worth, Like I said, there's, there's been no water customer count on this house since 2004, so. The next property is 604 North 13th Street. This one is vacant, and it, it has delinquent taxes since 2006, over $5,000 worth of taxes. There are judgments and liens on the property. It's, so it's been vacant and abandoned for several years. We, the city of Solina has also incurred abatement expenses for mowing and securing the house. So, the basement foundation, you see there, there, you can't, there's no foundation underneath that one at all. It's collapsed in various locations on the north and south side. It's been open for several years. So, it's, it's been abandoned for, well, I could say, probably getting close to eight, nine years now, so that one kind of speaks for itself.
We're not putting water hookups back in these properties, are we?
I'm sorry?
We got Siemens out there digging holes, putting new water hookups in these properties. Just wanted to make sure that we're, we're all on the same page here. See them out there?
I'll make sure and get that list.
Seeking new manholes in front of these houses. I mean, I'm sure the lot still would need it, actually.
Yeah.
More than likely, but...
Right, yeah, we would, we would probably want to make sure that we got the meters in the lot.
Yeah.
For, for future, just so that we don't have those extra ones hanging out there.
Yeah, we probably need them.
The next property is 1333 North 4th Street. This is another property that we have gotten word that the owner's been deceased. There's taxes owed since 2006, over $3,000. No water customer since 2006, so it's been abandoned since that time. And a little history on this one is that it was, it was, from what we have found, is it was moved in, and we're not sure whether or not it's on a foundation or not, it may just be sitting on the ground. No water service to this house since May of 2006, and the cost for this one, cost for repairs in my notes appears to be greater than 300% of the valuation of the building, and I, I don't know where that came from, but value of the structure is only $5,800, and they owe $3,000 in taxes, so that one is, and once again, this, this one also has been reported to us to be a deceased owner.
What's on picture two? What's the placard down the garage door?
Oh, that's some kind of, when we drove by, do you remember what that is, Ron? It's some, it's oxygen, yeah. Yeah, oxygen, or, or, yeah, that's probably right, so. At one time, there was an owner living in there that was probably on oxygen. That's, yeah. And then, our last house for you, for your enjoyment today, is 909 North 11th Street. This is a single-family dwelling, there's over $2,600 taxes owed since 2007. The value of this one is around $5,600, and has not had water since 2006. This is another one that we suspect is, doesn't have a foundation, or much of a foundation, at least we can't see it from the outside anywhere. So, siding in the bottom plates resting on the ground, and of course, it's subject to rot eventually, as with most of these structures, we're in fear, we're in fear of them not only collapsing, but also of, you know, them being an attractive nuisance to kids playing, or, you know, most of them, we, we try to keep up with and keep them boarded up, but of course, that, that costs us to have the contractors go and do that. Exhibit D in your packet is just a resolution talking about the process that we went through a little bit, about the resolution itself. Exhibit E is a notice for this hearing, so. In the, in our city goals, I have them here somewhere, I got tied up in my, anyway, one of them is the, "The city will maintain growth and development policies that are updated reflect current conditions and desire, desired growth direction." The other conformance with the strategic plan is that the city will create a community of mixed-use quality development and redevelopment. So, staff has identified the following alternatives for the commissioner's consideration. Number one is to approve Resolution Number 12-6921, directing the owners to repair or demolish and remove structures at 1333 North 4th Street, 633 South 4th Street, 636 North 5th Street, 909 North 11th Street, 503 North 13th Street, and 604 North 13th Street by September 7, 2012, and authorizing staff to proceed with demolition or repair in the event the said owners fail to comply by that date. Number two is postpone consideration of this resolution pending additional information needed as directed by the commission. Number three is decline to approve the Resolution 12-6921, providing for repair and removal of these dangerous structures. And of course, we, we recommend number one, option number one. I might add that to this date, the only costs have been, they're not only costs, I mean, we've had costs in abating some of them, costs in securing some of the buildings, but also the staff time and doing the research, the cost for the mailings, costs for the publication. So there is some costs involved already that we are already, have already incurred. Then also, if we proceed with this, we have the potential demolition of six structures. And we haven't, we, of course, have not gone to any bids or anything like that, but that can be substantial, so just want the commission to know that. I have staff members here who have helped, I wanted to thank my staff for the many, many hours that we put into this project, and we get done with these, and we'll go find you some more, because we've got a few more on our list. So we'll be here for any questions.
So here's the question that the public may want to know. Let's say that you end up with $7,000 worth of demolition and abatement and cleanup costs on a piece of property, and you've got 5,000, a lot of these had $5,000 worth of back taxes owed on them. So there's a $12,000 bill. Do a little education then on who pays that $12,000 bill?
It's, the city pays that out of taxpayers' dollars.
Okay.
And then it is assessed back to the, to the property, or to the property owners, and if that is not paid, then at some point, the properties will go up for sale at a sheriff's auction, tax auction.
So you could potentially have quite a hefty bill on a piece of property that is virtually worth little to nothing?
Depending upon what the, what the property sells for. Yes, you're right. You're right. You're entirely right.
Mr. Mayor, we did not anticipate that we'd recuperate 100% of the value that we would have in the structure itself if it did go to a tax sale, but there are several entities out there who'd be willing to take those lots, buy those lots at a reduced cost, and use them again, such as Habitat for Humanity.
Right, right, that's what I was just going to say. Habitat for Humanity did that.
Exactly. That's how they come up with the majority of their lots to build on, so. Yes, we will have a substantial bill against each one of the properties, but again, it would be better to have an empty lot and a buildable lot that would have a new structure put back on the property.
Sure. The concept being, generate the taxes from the new structure versus continuing to pay for an old structure.
Yeah, that's dangerous.
It's dangerous.
Continuing to board it up, continuing to make, to keep an eye on them, keep, continuing to abate.
And maybe, just as, just as a sideline, I would say, this sort of, houses getting to this point, I think emphasizes our need to continue our discussion on our minimum maintenance codes and making sure that we don't let houses get to this point, you know, to where we're having to demolish these things at a cost that we have some enforcement to go after these things before they get down, this far down the road, so.
Yeah. But back to the issue at hand, I would ask that, as well, I think, I noticed at least one of these pieces of property is owned by somebody that's a multiple property owner in town. Is the cost of that property in any way than taken against back taxes or another property owned by the same owner?
Actually, the, the cost of demolishing the property, if the city would do that, are assessed to this particular property itself, and it would not bear upon any other property that the owner has, other than the fact that that property could go up to a tax sale, or the owner of the property would be required to be current on those property taxes before we could start issuing other building permits and those type issues.
Those procedures are specified by state statute.
Well, those were the only things that I wanted actually to make more clear for the viewing public. Are there any questions of staff at this point in time?
I was just wondering if you're the same Elvin that's on a football card I seen? It, I just, I know, it's completely off-subject there, but it's been bugging me all weekend.
Guilty as charged.
I'm a Broncos fan, too, so it's okay. I had to ask.
Yes, indeed, guilty as charged. Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? So at this point in time, I'd like to bring the public hearing back to the commission for any further discussion or action.
Mayor, I move at this time, we adopt Resolution 12-6923, utilizing staff recommendation one, and that is to directing the owners to repair, demolish, remove the structures, et cetera, et cetera, as stated.
Do we need to go through all the addresses into that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, that would be necessary.
Okay, I'll, I'll add that, restate.
It's right here, the whole...
Where are you at, sorry?
Yeah, right by your thumb.
Yep, right there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, approve Resolution 12-6923, directing the owners to repair and or demolish and remove the structures at 1333 North 4th Street, 633 South 4th Street, 636 North 5th Street, 909 North 11th Street, 503 North 13th Street, 604 North, and 604 North 13th Street by September 7, 2012, and authorizing the staff to proceed with demolition or repair in the event said owners fail to comply by that date.
And I hold my second.
We have a motion and a second approving, to approve Resolution Number 12-6923, directing the owners to repair, demolish, and remove structures at 1333 North 4th, 633 South 4th, 636 North 5th, 909 North 11th, and 503 North 13th, and 604 North 13th Street by September 7, and authorizing staff to proceed with demolition or repair in the event that the owner does not comply by that date. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We now move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes to July 16, 2012. Item 6.2, approve change order number one for the sanitary sewer cleaning and inspection project number 112898, with mayor specialty services in amount of $23,869. Item 6.3, authorize the submittal of an application for the 2012 Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Item 6.4, Resolution Number 126924, admitting the city's line of personnel manual.
Are there any items that the commissioner wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Might entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
We have a motion and a second to prove the consent agenda is read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We now move on to development business.
Item 7.1, application number Z12-4, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 to R1 on a 7.26 acre tract of land located on the north end of Quell Hollow Drive and Prairie Lane, east of Presbyterian Manor. Sub item 7.1A, first reading ordinance number 12, $10,648.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an application filed by Todd Welsh, requesting a change in the zoning map for the city of Solina for property that is presently zoned agricultural. And, John, if you could go to the vicinity, the property owner's map there will, the property that is being proposed for rezoning is located in this gray shaded area there, and it is directly east of property owned by Presbyterian Manor, and there's property that's directly to the east of it that's currently owned by First Christian Church. Then Mr. Welsh shows the property to the east of that, and that is not part of this request. So this request revolves a piece of property that is 7.26 acres in size. It's bounded by single-family dwellings on the south in the Pheasant Ridge addition, Presbyterian Manor on the west, and pasture land to the north, and some vacant land, as I noted, that's owned by the First Christian Church. And if the rezoning request is approved, the plan is to develop a residential subdivision containing 20... containing 27 new residential building lots. And as I noted, this property was annexed in the spring of 2009, but no activity has taken place on the property since that time. John, if you could go to the summary that summarizes the building regulations. The summary of what is involved in the R1 district is that it requires a minimum front setback of 25 feet off the front property line, minimum seven and a half feet on each side, and 25 feet at the rear. It also has a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet. And we indicate to you here that the lot size, the minimum lot size in this subdivision is a little under 7,000 square feet, and all the dimensional requirements conform with the R1 district. Did want to clarify, there are occasionally comments that people don't object to having the property zoned for single-family housing, but they don't want it zoned for affordable housing, or they don't want it zoned for low-income housing. And the City of Salina does not have a separate zoning category that deals with that, nor does zoning deal with minimum house size requirements. That is a market decision, and the R1 district simply lays out minimum lot size and setback requirements, and how many lots can be laid out in a subdivision. But the zoning has nothing to do with home sizes, or styles, or types of any, any kind. So if we look at the property itself, it's a sloped piece of ground that slopes from south to north. And if you look at the aerial photo, you can kind of see the historical drainage pattern. Water comes down a concrete-lined channel, and then it kind of meanders across this property towards the northeast, and then it, it meanders back again. But there is quite a bit of off-site runoff that comes to this property. If you think about virtually the entire East Crawford Recreation Area and the slope there, and all that property is draining from the south and coming to this property. It crosses Crawford right here, goes into this channel, and then it kind of spreads out from there. So, one of the things that has made this property challenging to develop, and is one of the reasons that nothing has occurred since 1992, when the first phase developed, is, is dealing with, a plan for dealing with the off-site runoff. Certainly, the applicant believes that the, the A1 zoning on the property presently inhibits development of the property. And I think staff looking at it would certainly agree that if you make public utilities available, this is certainly a logical extension of the existing subdivision that was approved and laid out in 1991. Again, if you look at the surrounding area, if single-family homes on this seven-acre site would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. As far as the water supply and fire protection, the plan is to utilize an eight-inch line that's in, in Brookwood, and tie it to the existing system here in, in the Pheasant Ridge addition, and create a looped system with two sources of flow. There is an existing sanitary sewer pump station that's located right here that was designed for Phase One of the Pheasant Ridge addition. The plan put together by the design engineer for the applicant is to relocate that pump station to the northeast corner of this subdivision, which would put it here, and from there, the effluent collected would be pumped down Brookwood Lane to a manhole over near the intersection of Estates Drive and Brookwood Lane. That is a feasible option. It may not be the, the long-term, full-build-out option as this area of the city develops, but it is a plan that works for this particular subdivision, and it is adaptable, where at some point in time, hopefully, that pump station could be abandoned and some form of gravity system put in its place. The general plan is to have, the lots would be graded to drain to these two streets here. Runoff would be collected and piped over to an extension of the drainage ditch that would extend from south to north. The applicant's engineer is proposing a small detention area here. There's quite a bit of volume coming through here, and there would be some quieting of the water there before it moves on to the north. As far as fire protection, you've got Station 4 at Crawford and Marymount. As far as schools, you have Metal Arc Ridge Elementary, Lakewood Middle School, and Salina Central High School. And with 27 lots on 7.26 acres, we're looking at about 3.7 housing units per acre, which fits within the low-density classification. On June 19th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application, and at the conclusion, they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request for R1 zoning, based on the location and physical attributes of the property, the plan being a logical extension of existing residential development. Needed utilities exist or can be extended, and the zoning change would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. So this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and the action today, if you're in agreement, would be to approve an ordinance rezoning the property on first reading, and second reading would be held until the applicant comes back with a final plat. With that, I'd be open to any questions that you have about the zoning being requested, the 7.2 acre property itself.
Any questions of staff here?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a citizen or citizens that would like to comment on this?
Mayor, Commissioners, Todd Welsh, 221 South Morse Drive, and would just like to request that, your consideration for this, we have a nice plan put in place and should be returning real soon with a final plat for this project, so. Any questions of myself?
Any questions of Mr. Welsh?
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Bring the matter back to the commission for further discussion and any action to be Understand through what was presented, that there was one, one objection to this, and the objection was just based on possible impact to the home values in the area, and I, I think as Mr. Andrew pointed out, that, that's a market condition. We don't have separate zonings that are requested based upon anticipated home values or, or lot sizes. We heard Mr. Andrew talk about the density, so it seems to be that the application is in order with what applies for moving a piece of property from an R1 to a, or from an A1 to an R1.
Mayor, move we adopt ordinance 12-10648 on first reading, holding second reading in abeyance until the final plating of the property.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve application Z12-4, ordinance 12-10648, holding the second reading into abeyance until the final plating. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We move on to administration.
Item 8.1, resolution number 126922, authorizing the mayor to execute a workforce housing development agreement with TWI Development Incorporated.
Mr. Hobbie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, you have before you a resolution today that will set in place a development agreement between TWI Development, Inc. and the City of Salina. As recognized by the City Chamber, Salina Chamber of Commerce, many years ago, we found that a need for workforce housing has been issued in our area, and we'd like to address that issue by working with Mr. Todd Welsh and TWI Development in trying to overcome that issue and start working on some houses that we feel like will be in the workforce housing price area. The City of Salina has received three different grant opportunities to work with, and is also requiring some private funds to be put together with those, with those grants. We received from the Housing Department of Housing and Urban Development, a $118,750 grant, of which 80% will be used towards the purchase of the land, and the other 20% will be used towards the purchase of planning and development of the area. We also received from the Environmental Protection Agency, a water and wastewater grant for $243,000. This is required to have a grant match of private funds of $198,100. This allows the water and wastewater to be installed in the subdivision that was just subsequent to this, this project. The third grant is from the North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission. They have given us, awarded us $130,000 to be used for infrastructure improvements on this same property. You'll notice when we get down to the bottom of the sheet, that there's not adequate funds from the grants by themselves to purchase the property, as well as put in the streets, the stormwater, and the wa, water and wastewater systems. So there will be some private funding that is required to be put into this project. The city has a, a project that's been placed in front of you. You just went through the rezoning of the same project area and the same project map. The developer is getting ready to produce a 27-lot subdivision with the grant funds being used to go towards the development of all the infrastructure improvements on that property. Mr. Andrew was very good about telling you exactly where the project was and what's going to happen with the project and the 27 lots that will be developed. There will be one extra lot that could be developed at a later time, and that's when the substation for the, or, excuse me, the list station for the wastewater system is removed and relocated. We will be able to use that lot then as another soluble lot in the future. Mr. Welsh owns the property and is willing to develop the property as per the plan that you have before you. We're very pleased to be able to accept the grant funds from EPA, HUD, as well as the North Central Regional Planning Commission. On behalf of this project, we would like to move forward with the, the signature of the mayor and the adoption of the resolution to allow us to move forward with the development of this project. As Mr. Andrew just mentioned, there will be completion of the final plat prior to the development probably starting. You see before you today, you have approximately, excuse me, I'll find it here, $407,783 in developer grant proceeds, as well as there'll be a mortgage for a property that will be exposed later on. At that point, when the mortgage is exposed and the properties are sold, then the city will release a portion of that mortgage, 1/27th for each lot that is held. The city also will work with the developer to come up with a special tax assessment for each one of the properties. The assessment we anticipate will be around $6,750, which is less than a third than what the normal tax rate or assessment rate would be on a normal property. It is our goal that when the properties are sold, that the properties will see, and the property owner will see, a reduced cost in their energy charges each month because of the type of Energy Star, or very similar to an Energy Star home that'll be built on the property, as well as less tax dollars for special assessments for the properties. The city staff would recommend we move forward with the development agreement and ask for the mayor's signature on the final plans, and ask for us to move forward with the development agreement. If you do not wish for us to move forward today, we'd ask for your input as far as the changes you'd like to see in the development agreement, or you have the option of taking no, no vote today as far as approving the adoption and then send it back to city staff, or drop this project and move on to another project in, in the Salina area. I'd be more than glad to stand for any questions. We have with us a city attorney's office who's been very active in the, the development of this agreement with Mr. Martin, as well as Mr. Bengson. They've been very helpful, as well as Mr. Welsh and his attorney have been very helpful as in getting this project put to, hopefully, in gear to, we can start doing some infrastructure work here this fall. I'd be glad to stand for questions.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Hobbie, in one area on your recommended action, you have the mayor executing the development agreement, and then on another section, the city manager is executing, are those forms other than the agreement?
No, ma'am. The forms will be actually with this. The development agreement has multiple grants that are involved with it, and so the city manager's signature has been placed on those grants. The development agreement will only have the mayor's signature.
Okay, so we need to specify city manager versus mayor.
Commissioners, just, I want to emphasize something, too. When you look at the agreement, it identifies significant amount of energy efficiency and quality aspects, and the applicant did a great job of basically exceeding each of those. But the point in all that was to not create a low-cost house, but to create a high-quality house that's affordable for workforce housing. Workforce housing's not the lowest-cost house in Salina, so when you really look at the value of the home, there's a target in there, but the actual value, that's going to be higher than what that target sales number is. So we, we really wanted something for the long term, and I think they've done a good job of, of not only matching that, but exceeding that. So I think you'll find a pretty good quality product there.
Mr. Hobbie, has TWI been involved in other workforce housing projects here in Salina?
Actually, they have, and that's one of the things that brought them to the top of the, the list. They have been working on a project out on Schilling Road. It's called Stone Creek. They developed a small property where they use the same type of housing that we're going to be putting in this project area. It's been a successful project, and we felt like we ought to move forward with something very similar.
And it, where, where is that? Where's that located? Give me a big reference point close to it.
Just north of Schilling School.
Okay.
Between Interstate 70 and, there's several motels.
Actually, it's just, it's just a touch west of Schilling School. It's literally on the north side of Schilling. I would say if you exit off the, or, I'm sorry, east, that's correct. I was on the wrong side, too. On the east side, if you exit off the interstate, your first intersection's Marcella, Virginia, and it's just a few hundred feet past that, and on the left-hand side.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think for those listening at home, and those that may not be as familiar with this project, it bears noting that we went through a request for proposal process, and we solicited, we solicited at least 50 developers and gave them the opportunity to propose. So to say that, that Todd Welsh came to the top of the list, that was as a result of their response to our request for proposals and, and a detailed review and negotiation of this development agreement.
Super. Okay. Any further questions of staff? On this matter, are there any citizens that would like to comment to the commission?
Your Honor, Dennis Lover with the Salina Chamber of Commerce. I just want to thank your city staff. It was a long haul to get here today, and I also want to personally thank Jerry Moran for his support when we first had this conversation with him about the need to address affordable, available housing in Salina. At the time, he said, "You're the first community in Kansas that ever talked about, talked about that issue." And I told Jerry recently that this issue was up on the agenda, and he says, "It's the only issue I now hear every time I go to any community in Kansas." But thanks to you, your staff, for their work and, working with Todd through this project.
Thank you. Any other citizens? Sir, come on up, state your name and address.
Hello, my name's John Miller with 505 Moon, and I'm here because I'm concerned about, I guess that Chamber of Commerce is getting more money increased of what they want? Does I understand that right?
Say again, sir?
Huh?
Say that again. I didn't quite understand you.
The Chamber of Commerce here to get, to increase in operating money, right?
Oh, that's not, that's not the issue that we're speaking of.
Oh, you're not speaking on that day?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I just want to say something that, you know, I lived here all my last 65 years, and I think we've got some poor, poor leadership with Chamber of Commerce, and I don't think, and I think the street commissioners up there ain't too well either. I'll just state my point, okay?
That's, that's not the issue at hand right now.
I understand that, but I'm just telling you, it sucks.
Please come back, sir. Please come back in a normal citizen form. Are there any other citizens' comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and any action?
Mayor, I'm.
I move we adopt resolution 12-6922, accepting workforce housing development agreement with TWI, for construction of infrastructure in the Welsh tradition. To use for workforce housing units, allowing for the signature of the city manager on the forms on behalf of the City of Salina, and authorizing the mayor to execute. the forms on behalf of the City of Salina, and authorizing the mayor to execute the workforce housing development agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to allow for the Resolution 12-6922 to be authorized by the mayor to execute this workforce housing agreement with TWI Development, Inc. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. It's kind of hard to get used to the roller coaster effect of the microphone. I hope those at home don't hear this.
Item 8.2, request for direction from, to staff regarding potential implementation of publication of regular ordinances by summary, and whether to continue to require two readings for regular ordinances as a result of elimination of state law requirement.
Mr. Bengson.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, two developments out of the legislative session that relate to our processes with regard to ordinances. As you might be aware, it has always been necessary for the ordinances to be published in full, not an inexpensive process, but what has been as a matter of law. Through agreement between, negotiated between the League of Municipalities and the Kansas Press Association, we've transitioned now to the opportunity to publish by summary as far as the newspaper would be concerned, as long as we have a system in place whereby the ordinance can be set out in full on the city's website, and we make it known that that is the approach that you wish to take. So the question, the first question for you today is whether you wish to, for us to bring back to you the item that would implement that process. It's somewhat like the copier ad, I suppose, where, you know, is, you know, where's, where's the trick to this question? It is a positive development in terms of the expense of this matter, but something that does need to be at your discretion. The second matter relates just to the 15 cities that are cities of the first class and commission manager form cities in the state of Kansas. That has to do with the two reading requirement. In the process of making this statute uniformly applicable, the action was then taken to eliminate the two reading requirement as a matter of state law for commission cities. That leaves to you for discussion today, or at whatever time you might wish, as to how we would proceed locally in terms of consideration of ordinances. Heretofore, or at whatever time you might wish to address the matter, you would have the option of going to a single reading, sustaining our practice of two readings, whatever combination of events you believe appropriately places the matter before the public and enables you to take final action. Staff would recommend that we transition to the publication method, and did not have a recommendation on the number of readings or the process for consideration of ordinances, that being more entirely in your discretion.
Very good. I guess I would definitely concur with the publication of ordinances. And on, on the readings, I think we have derived some valuable input between a first and second reading, and I think we also have a pretty big public expectation there. So I think that might be something that if we proceed in any fashion of change, I would ask that the commission consider that and direct staff to help us to put together any sort of change that's needed if anybody feels that there's a need to deviate from our two reading process that we currently have. Those are just my thoughts. Is there other thoughts or any questions?
No, I agree. I agree. I think the two readings at this point, so far, still seems to weigh out pretty well, and as you said, gives the public opportunity to perhaps come in even on that second reading.
Right. And sometimes it gives us more time to look at more facts and take into consideration other factors, so I think, I think there's no need for it.
On the matter of the publication summary, any questions or, or thoughts on, on why we wouldn't want to implement that as, with the change that we can now?
I, I agree with Mayor Jennings, and that we certainly can save some money by not, by going to the summary, but also that maybe we want to keep that second reading at least for a while, in my opinion.
It doesn't seem like, at least I can't remember, since we, Mayor and I have been on, that we've ever had public comment in between first and second reading, but it seems that the commission has utilized that time to make some changes or do something different in between the first and second reading, unless there's some other way for us to still have that flexibility without having the second reading. It seems like we should keep it in there.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think you're, you're probably right. I think traditionally, the, the time that you would get, the utilization of that time for public comment would be on very, very difficult issues in the public, and, you know, and at those, a lot of times, you'll have attention paid to them throughout the entire process, not just up to first reading. That's probably when that's the handiest. But we kind of felt you'd probably want to hold on to that as well, and figured that there's not a huge cost savings. Administratively, there really wasn't any huge benefit to us because it doesn't take much effort or cost to do a second reading, so that's why we left it in your domain entirely without a recommendation, but felt you might want to hold on to that as well.
I might ask also, if I may, the, our previous practice with regard to emergency consideration of two readings at the same meeting has been strictly in accordance with state law. Would we want to mirror that approach as well going forward in terms of the way that has been handled?
Yeah, I would think so. Would that be then just somewhat a declaration of, of the right to approve on a, on a single reading, or would it still be in the same fashion of first reading and declaring emergency exists? It seems like there'd be two routes that could be taken now, but they might create confusion.
Yeah, that's, offhand, I, I think if we want to keep the two reading model, then the emergency declaration probably is important to go through that process.
I would, again, in my opinion, I would say that's a route that we, we'd want to retain that and be able to, to still follow that, yeah. What type of action is required of us on these two items at this point in time?
Well, at this point in time, simply direction to the staff, and I think we're hearing a consensus, we would certainly come back to you with a resolution setting out that process.
Okay. Would you like a motion to formalize the request of staff to?
Well, that'd be fine.
Yeah, or, we've got, you have, it sounds like the consensus is across the board, so we can, I don't even know if we need a motion, we can bring back that resolution for you.
If we don't need one, that's great.
There you go.
Okay, thank you, then.
Thank you.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance number 12-10646, vacating a 36-foot segment of the platted restricted access along the north side of Lot 1, Block 1 in the Premier Edition.
I venture to guess that this ordinance wasn't passed on first reading on July 23rd.
Last week.
Last, last week, so that's.
July 16th.
July 16th, okay. So this ordinance 12-10646 was passed on first reading in last week's meeting, July 16th. Since that time, there have been no comments received. Section 4A of the ordinance has been amended by adding a second condition prior to publication of the ordinance.
Mr. Bengson.
Mayor, if I may, I placed at your seats before the meeting, a, an agreement that was in response to the second condition precedent.
Okay.
Mr. Mays advised me of the response of his client to that initial proposal. There was just one minor change. That is what prompted me to leave the meeting for a period of time, was to get that change put in place. So if I may, I can distribute to what would actually be the proposed agreement in its final form.
Please, please do.
I don't want to dictate the order of the discussion. I just, at whatever point you might like for me to address that agreement, I certainly can.
Yeah, I would be welcome to have that input at this point in time, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, in response to the commission's direction with regard to that additional condition precedent, that there would be a, an agreement entered into between Premier Properties, American Ag Credit, and the city with regard to the drive to be constructed in the easternmost break in the restricted access, we proceeded on that basis and presented a draft on Friday to the other parties. They were good enough to turn that around right away, and, as I say, with one change, I believe, we, I can certainly recommend that you go forward with it. To go through the agreement quickly, the recitals basically, of course, set up what brings us here, and then B, of course, describes what is essentially your finding as to the basis of the break in access. Section 1 of the agreement addresses the potential scenario that if there is a change in the use that was the basis of your action granting the removal of the restricted access, then that is subject to removal or modification at the sole discretion of the governing body in the event of that change in use. I think everyone anticipates that would be some time from now, if at all, but that is what would be left to the discretion of the city, of the governing body, if there should be a change in that use. Section 2 explains that if there was a, an action necessary to implement the wish of the governing body in the right-of-way, then that expense would be the city's. If the private property owner wanted to make any modifications on the private property as a result of that change, then that would be their, at their expense. Number 3, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at that first draft or not, that is where the change came. That has to do with making sure that ultimately there is not the basis for a claim for compensation in the event that the governing body determines that that driveway is to be removed. I had gone to the point of including in that language a, an acknowledgement that there was certain accessibility and circumstances there that would be the basis for a waiver of claim of any compensation. I think it's appropriate and correct from the developer's standpoint. They recognized that I had possibly gone a little far in making that statement because they, of course, are concerned in their having the discretion of, of being able to, even if there is a change of use, retaining the right to present evidence or persuade the governing body that there is not a need to close that drive. In, in describing the basis for how it is that that removal would be non-compensable, I spoke to matters that they understandably would not want to stipulate to because it would be matters that would not go to the compensability because they waived the compensability, but they would be matters that would go to the merits of whether the drive should be left open or closed. So I can certainly understand why, from their standpoint, it went further than it needed to in terms of justifying the waiver, when in fact, it would be statements against their interest as to the justification for the drive remaining in place, if that makes The, the last section just makes it clear that this is binding not only on these parties, but any subsequent owners of the real estate, and that this instrument would be recorded with the Saline County Register of Deeds. So as I say, the, the version that I just handed out, we do have indications of approval, and if it would be your wish in conjunction with second reading on the ordinance, having had that indication, I think it is the desire of all parties to move forward with the agreement, and if it meets your approval, you might wish to add that to your consideration of the matter today as well.
Yeah, good reason for second readings.
That's good reason for second readings.
And this is a second reading based upon the action taken in the July 16th meeting, not the meeting prior when, when this project was first discussed.
That's correct, Mayor.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Do we need to reference this?
I think if it's your wish, I would think that going forward with a second reading on the ordinance and the roll call associated with that would be the first step.
Okay.
If you wish to consider the agreement today, that's entirely up to you, then I think that would be your second step.
Okay, I'll start with the first step. Mayor, at this time, I move that we accept ordinance number 12-10646 on second reading, vacating a 36-foot segment of the platted restricted access along the north side of Lot 1, Block 1 in the Premier Edition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 12-10646, vacating a 36-foot segment of platted restricted access along the north side of Lot 1, Block 1 in the Premier Edition. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Nay. Motion carries 4-1.
Now, do we need to do the second part?
Yeah, and that's what, what wording, how do we need to bring that in?
The, I suppose it would be most correct to first determine whether you wish to add the matter to your agenda, since it is just being presented to you this afternoon. Given that that would be for this meeting, that does require unanimous consent. That would be the first step that I didn't mention before when I mentioned the two steps.
So maybe we better wait till it's on next week's agenda, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I think it's certainly fine to go forward, and I think, frankly, I think, as I would gather, that the parties would appreciate moving forward on it.
Yeah, basically calling for a motion to, to add on to today's agenda, the driveway agreement and covenants.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion then to add on today's agenda, the agreement for the driveway and the covenants.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add on the driveway agreement and covenants to today's agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion carries 5-0.
And then, part 2?
Right, I think now a motion would be in order. Right, I think now a motion would be in order as far as the agreement is concerned.
Motion to accept this.
If that's your wish, yeah.
I would make a motion that we accept the driveway agreement and covenants.
And second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the driveway agreement and covenants. And does this count as a second reading, then, as the overall item was a second reading?
No, I think now that, now that the ordinance has been approved on second reading, this would simply be a matter of, of a motion, and just a majority vote on the motion.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, nay. 4-0, the motion carries.
Item 8.4, second reading ordinance number 12-10,647, vacating a 30-foot segment of the platted restricted access adjoining the northwest corner of Lot 1, Block 1 in the Premier Edition.
It's almost a companion item to the last one, and this was passed on first reading in the July 16th meeting. Since that time, there have been no comments received. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Any public comment on this item at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
May I move we adopt on second reading, ordinance number 12-10647, vacating a 30-foot segment of the platted restricted access adjoining the northwest corner of Lot 1, Block 1 in the Premier Edition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, ordinance number 12-10647. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Nay. Motion carries 4 to 1. Do we have any other business before the commission today? Seeing none, I'd accept the final motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed can stay here. We now conclude.